Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. This is a rescheduled August 8th meeting. This is August 11th. August 8th, we didn't have a couple of members of the Board on vacation and there was a medical emergency, so we didn't have a quorum for that day, so we rescheduled for today, August 11th at 7 o'clock. Once the call gets back, we'll go through the minutes. It's not as loud as that?
That one's too loud.
Our mayor is on vacation, as well as trustee Trapp. They're having a good time. Their families on this much-needed break at this time. I assume that the trustees read the minutes of both July 11th and 21st. And I would ask if there's any additions, subtractions, alterations, amendments?
Oh, I have none.
Hearing none, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as written. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And the minutes have been approved for both July 11th and the 21st. And then we'll start on the monthly reports. Cindy, please.
Account balances. These are a little earlier because I was away, so I had to prepare this before I went away. General fund account balances as of August 1st. $677,891.59 Water fund. $198,823.26 Trust and agency. $27,899.53 Materials management. $7,068.63 Petty cash. $58.3 cents Village Green. $4,236.88 Hard Scrabble. $11,547.84 Health insurance. $5,548.80 Monthly expenses. General fund. $249,704.66 Water fund. $58,319.12 Trust and agency. $27,899.53 And materials management.
And I would entertain a motion to approve the Treasury report as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
And I will read the monthly report for the police department. This is of July 2016. There were 315 incidences, 33 in the village of Red Hook, 79 in the town of Red Hook, and three in the village of Tivoli. There were 119 uniform traffic tickets, of which 89 were in the village of Red Hook. This includes two parking tickets and 30 in the town of Red Hook. There were also 19 arrests, 13 in the village of Red Hook, and six in the town of Red Hook. And since trustee Trapp is also away, I will read the monthly report for zoning and planning. There were zero or 10 building permits issued. This is for July 2016. One certificate of occupancy that was issued. 10 certificates of compliance, and this includes two from June 29, 2016. There were seven municipal searches. No order to remedies, or stop work orders, or court appearances. One complaint. And there was a planning board meeting on July 14th, which a letter was received and read into record withdrawing the site plan for a property located on North Broadway. And on July 28th, there was a meeting for an area variance for a property located on Cambridge Drive. And that was tabled to August 25th. And the village department in the month of July pulled in a total of $2,850. A good month. And trustee Norris?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Sure. So events coming up next Saturday, August 20th, we will have our fifth annual community potluck and concert in Abrams Park. It'll be from 6 to 8. Local favorite Grass Bed Bluegrass will perform. This is Dan Budd's band. They do it every year. Please bring a chair and a dish to share. Please note there's no rain date, so if it rains, that's it. So hopefully the weather will be good for that. Hardscrabble Day will be Saturday, September 17th. It starts at 10:00 a.m. The usual vendors' food, kids' event, local bands, and a parade are all part of the fun. Parade will be at 4. Our main stage entertainment will be Patti Smythe and Scandal. They had some hits in the 80s, such as Warrior and Goodbye to You. I will refrain from singing them, but you can Google them. Vendor applications can be found on our website, hardscrabbleday.org. And I actually, I said in the report, we're working on scheduling Dog Halloween, Village Halloween, and Winter Fest, but I have those dates. So put them on the calendar. Village Halloween will be Saturday, October 29th. That's when the kids trick-or-treat around the merchants. Dog Halloween, which is run by the Paws Dog Shop, where the dogs trick-or-treat around the merchants, will be Sunday, October 30th. And then Winter Fest, which will be held in conjunction with Old Dutch Christmas at the Almond Orff, will be Sunday, December 4th. At an event that we don't really have much to do with, but the Chamber of Commerce runs is the Red Hook Chocolate Festival, which will be Saturday, November 5th. And then for materials management, for the month of July, we sold $3,250 in garbage tags and paid out $1,074.24. We had 5.5 tons of single-stream recycling and 10.2 tons of garbage. And that's all I have.
Jen?
Yes.
Your signs for your concert next week are in my office.
Oh, great.
And I didn't put a "You can come in this week or whenever" and change the date. I typed it up in color.
Okay.
And you can copy and paste it on there and put them out.
Excellent. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Trustees Archeck with the water report, please.
Excuse me. For the month of July, the water treatment plant treated 7,668,000 gallons of water, excuse me, and an average of 247,000 gallons per day. In July of 2015, water treatment plant treated 7,281,000 gallons, with an average of 235,000 gallons per day. During the month of July, the plant used 75 gallons of liquid hypochlorite solution and an average of 2.41 gallons per day. On July the 14th, the backup chemical feed pump malfunctioned and the local Grunfo's vendor was contacted for customer support. As our main chemical feed pump is still out for a warranty replacement due to a computer chip failure. Complete disassembly, soaking, flushing, and vinger solved the present difficulty. And a chance, and a change to the final diluted strength of the hypochlorite solution was made as per vendor recommendations. After these adjustments were made, the pump was, pump is running at optimal performance. Do we have a date on when we'll receive the main pump back?
I don't have one. I'll ask, but I don't know the damage.
Okay. Excuse me. Operator's note. According to New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, our entire state is under a drought watch. While very low impact has been seen on our system due to our unique and prolific aquifer, many other municipalities and private homes in nearby areas have not been so lucky. Maintaining this condition of purity and bondful supply is our responsibility, though our residents have embraced with positive response and humble thrift. And we would like to ask for continued effort as we endure the historically dry weather of August. Thank you for your continued support. And that is the report.
Thanks, Steve. And we did get an official announcement from Dutchess County Supervising Public Health Engineer on July 21st of a drought watch issued for, by the New York State DEC. And a watch is the first of four levels of state drought advisories. They include watch, warning, emergency, and disaster. There are no statewide mandatory water use restrictions in place under a drought watch. However, as mentioned in Steve's report, local public water suppliers may require such measures depending on local needs and conditions. And so far, we've been lucky.
Also, how long is that pump enough for repair?
Probably, well, more than 30 days.
I mean, if they're saying it's a computer chip, I would hope they would be able to replace it fairly quickly.
Quickly enough, right?
All right.
Yeah. I'll have to get a better answer.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll start with the Village Green monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts as of July 31st are as follows. Community beautification: $4,000 shade tree contractual. $10,500 Village Green checking account. $4,236.88 There were no Village Green committees held during the month of July. The village highway department has prepared a list of trees that are being considered for removal and/or pruning. The Village Green Committee will be out looking at those trees on Sunday. And they'll also be reviewed by a certified arborist. And good news is that all 23 benches purchased through grants by the Village Green Committee in the village of Red Hook have been labeled with commemorative and dedication plaques. The Village Green Committee thanks all who have participated in this program. $1,920 has been raised from the purchase of plaques that will be used for future village enhancement projects. So thanks to all who did purchase a plaque.
Excuse me, Frank.
Yes, sir.
Are there any plans to put more benches in, administ?
We did have, not from the village, we've just recently located a new bench that was purchased and donated by a private individual up in Memorial Park. And there was another individual that came forward considering putting another bench on South Broadway. So I went ahead and received estimates from the bench supplier and also from the people who put in the slabs, the anchoring slabs. And so it's up to them to come. But from this point of view, these, the first 23 trees, or benches, we have 24 currently in the village. And these were done through, or two of them were purchased through the, one was, two through Red Hook Commons purchased, Chamber of Commerce purchased one. And I believe the Rotary also purchased one. And the rest were purchased through grants that we received to the Village Green Committee. So it's been successful. And if there's more out there, we would certainly find a location for them to help people with their dedication plaques. The village highway department monthly report for the month of July. The village highway department is currently picking up lawn debris and brush every first and third Monday of the month. And of course, in the southwest quadrant where construction is going on, we try to pick up and not interfere with construction. We ask residents to place the piles out close to the date of pickup just to prevent conflicts with other services and to keep the streets clean and free from wind-borne debris. We ask you also to limit the size of the brush piles to six foot by six foot by six foot. And please do not include tree trunks and debris from tree maintenance performed by private contractors and/or tree maintenance companies. Dutchess County Department of Public Works announces on July 22nd that bridge RH-18 on Linden Avenue, County Route 79 over the Sawkill Creek in the town of Red Hook has reopened the traffic. And this is good news to a lot of people who live out that way. And they did this five weeks ahead of schedule and within budget. Work continues on the reinforcement of the bridge on State Route 199 at the intersection of Route 308 in Rock City. Sawmill Road and Rock City Road will be available for emergency vehicles and residential use only. The work is scheduled to be complete by August 11th. I hope they make it. They're supposed to be done at least before the fair, which I believe starts on the 23rd. Yeah, I was out there last week too, and I don't know. That being said, the village highway department is preparing a list of projects to be paid for through the New York State fiscal year 2016-17 Consolidated Highway Improvement Program Allocation, or CHIPS. The following projects are being considered: repaving Bassett Lane, repaving Thompson Street, repaving portions of Cambridge Drive, replace Catch Basin on Amherst Drive, Catch Basin replacement at Cambridge Drive, and Catch Basin replacement in St. Christopher's Catholic Church. And we're also looking at financing a portion of a replacement BACCO pending completion of the fiscal year 2015 and '16 AUD and comparative estimates, which we have received. So we're hoping to get, see how much extra funds we have that's over from last year to help pay off some or most of the cost.
That Catch Basin, three Amherst Drives, is that Amherst and Cambridge?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure where it's at.
Does that say Amherst Road?
Yeah. So we did get estimates for that. And so we're looking at the cost of all these things, and then looking at what we have for CHIPS, and then moving forward with that. New York State Department of Transportation notified the village of Red Hook that the village qualifies for $9,195.77 in funds from the PAID New York program. These are extra funds that the DOT had and are distributed amongst the municipalities for eligible projects. And these projects will follow the same guidelines as our CHIPS projects. So this is extra $9,000 that we can use, which will certainly help out in doing more of the work that we have intended to do. And the village of Red Hook submitted an overview of the proposed 2016 Community Developed Block Grant project. This was the, if you remember, the pedestrian activated crosswalk signals. There were four of them, three on South Broadway and one on West Market Street to the New York State DOT on July 22nd. The overview was submitted in response to an announcement by the New York State DOT of $18 million in unclaimed unused transportation funds, or FAST programs. Projects submitted are required to be pedestrian and ADA-related. So we're looking to do that, and then we'll be talking about next year's Community Developed Block Grant in a regular business section. Reimbursement for the sale of scrap metal was received on July 15th for the amount of $372.86. And this also is our total revenue generated for this fiscal year so far. Since the inception of the scrap metal recycling program in 2007, $19,620.78 has been generated. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the highway department, the water, and the materials management departments. And anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact our highway department at 758-862, or the village clerk's office. And we will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The intermunicipal task force, the Red Hook Infrastructure Project, and Robert will go into a little bit more on Phase Two when we get to that. The Red Hook Sewer Project meetings were held on July 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th. At the Red Hook Village Building, we reviewed grant applications and timetables for award announcements of the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant program. We have just shy of a million-dollar application out for that. We submitted the affidavit of publication of the bond resolution as per bond council's request. And this is what the trustees approved on June 13th. They reviewed items requested by USDA Rural Development for revised preliminary funding estimate and letter of conditions. And also discussed donation, transfer of ownership of the Red Hook Commons Sewage Corporation's treatment plan and land. Our meeting was also held on July 22nd with our attorneys and the owners of the Red Hook Commons Sewage Corporation, just to start negotiations with the transfer of ownership of that property. And the village also submitted a consolidated funding application for the Empire State Development Grant Program. That was $992,000. I think, believe the water infrastructure improvement was about $1,000,125% of 4.9%. So we have about $2 million of grant outstanding for the sewer project. We should be hearing soon, I would hope. I know you submitted a letter to EFC asking for a status and an update on that one grant. The water project, Phase Two meetings were held on July 1st, 8th, 15th, 20th, 22nd, and 29th at the Red Hook Village Building. And we discussed various water repairs that the village is doing on Benner Road, South Broadway, Prairie Street, Garden Street, and Prince Street that we would have to perform so the Phase Two contractors could tie into existing water. And those will be taken care of hopefully next week. We reviewed Catch Basin locations on Prince and Church Street, and reviewed reports and comments from the Arborist subcontractor from Integral Tree and Landscape on the condition of certain trees and topsoil and weed remediation from the first installment of topsoil. And we also reviewed the road with transitions at Prince Street and Church Street. And Robert will have more on that as we go forward. The Phase Two construction meeting was held on July 20th with Jersey Construction and USDA Rural Development. Review the status of the project. 85% as of July 20th. 85% of the new water mains have been installed. 60% to 65% of the curbs have been installed. And all major work excluding driveway and site restoration is anticipated to be complete by the end of August 2016. They're currently, right now, moving quite, they're setting up for curbing on Church and Prince Street. Water mains are, I believe, put in all the way through on Prince Street at this point. And they'll be hooking up once the testing has come in. The new storage tank has successfully passed water quality testing and is ready to be operational. The form E, Rural Development, various forms that we submitted, just to give you an update on the cost, expenditures this period totaled $362,945. And expenditures to date as of July 20th was $2,146,042.35. And gross electric has started work at the Firehouse Lane Well Field Site, I believe, or soon to start anyway. So we're moving right along and ahead of schedule on Phase Two. The 2015 Community Developed Block Grant, Firehouse Lane and the Firehouse Sidewalk has been replaced to comply with punchless review. The ramp detection. Put a form in there just to notify people that this is where the beginning of the ramp is. That was repaired and replaced. And the final payment request was submitted in June of 2016. On the intermunicipal task force, which I represent the village of Red Hook, task force met on July 1st, 8th, and 22nd at the Red Hook Town Hall. We are currently working on a special report involving formula business regulations in the town of Red Hook and also the village of Red Hook at Tivoli. The Red Hook Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are village liaisons on that. There were no meetings held during the month of June, July, I'm sorry, due to the lack of a quorum. Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, I'm a member of that, representing the village. CPF meeting was held on July 14th at the Red Hook Town Hall. The CPF Advisory Board recommended that the Red Hook Town Board that CPF funding be used for the fee acquisition of a parcel along the newly designated Mountain View Trail and adjacent to the town of Red Hook Recreation Park Annex on Linden Avenue. This parcel was listed on the 2016 project plan update as a trail adjacent property. And it was verified that fee simple acquisition is permitted by the Enabling Legislation for Parcels to be Used for the Establishment of Parks, Nature Preserves, and Recreational Areas. The 1.09 acre parcel will be purchased by the CPF funds in the amount of $55,000. The Red Hook Town Board did approve this at a public hearing on July 27th. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of July 31st is $502,828.93. The Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, I'm also a member of that. The ZRC held a meeting on July 14th at the Red Hook Town Hall. We had preliminary discussions concerning solar farm zoning regulations. And also, we're discussing food truck zoning regulations in the town of Red Hook. The town of Red Hook and villages of Red Hook and Tivoli Shared Services Committee, both Ed and I sit on there. There were no shared services committee held during the month of July. And there was no meeting of the Softwood Watershed Community. I believe the date that we usually meet, the first month, the other month, that was July 4th. So that meeting was postponed till, or moved to August. And Red Hook together, there were no meetings of that. So that's, that's it for the monthly reports. As far as regular business, the village Board of Trustees has one of our duties, does appoint new members to the Red Hook Public Library Board of Trustees. We did receive a letter on August 8th, 2016, from the president of the Red Hook Public Library Board of Trustees, addressed to Mayor Ed Blundell and the Board of Trustees. It reads, "After conducting a search for a new trustee for the Board of Red Hook Public Library, we are recommending Sally Dwyer McNulty by be appointed. She will replace Barry Ravitch, who served as a trustee for more than a decade. Upon your approval, Sally will serve for a five-year term. The library posted the opening for the trustee, seen on its website, and required interested individuals to complete a questionnaire and meet with the existing board. Sally is an active, informed, and interested library supporter who has been a patron of Red Hook Public Library for more than a decade. We believe her combination of concern for the community and passion for the library will make a positive impact on the library's future." On a personal note, Sally also served as a member of the Village Green Committee. And she worked very closely with the Red Hook Public Schools, trying to engage the elementary schools and students in helping with planting trees and poster contests. And she's also a resident of the village of Red Hook. She'd be a great addition to the Board of Library. So I would, I would entertain a motion to approve Sally Dwyer McNulty as a new trustee on the Board of the Red Hook Public Library.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next would be water, Phase Two update. Robert?
We'll save it. So Phase Two, as Brent just mentioned, the water portion of the work, the actual water pipes in the ground, we're getting very close to that. There's a little bit of work to be done on Church Street, basically from Prince to West Market, and Prince Street here to Village Hall, and switching, switching the services over. And that's, that's the end of the water main part of the work. Of course, I've got to restore, finish restoring the roads, finish connecting the driveways, restoring lawns, and that kind of thing. So contractor definitely wants to get done sooner than later. So we are looking towards, towards the end of August, beginning of September. I would say the end of August is a little optimistic. We're gonna start restoring the roads by the end of August for sure.
Something I want to bring up too, and I, I did copy the trustees on this, that we had discussed this at one of our workshop meetings, but the intersection at Prince and Church Street, there's a transition from the 30-foot section of road on Church Street going south.
You guys got a drawing on that?
Yeah, we did get a drawing. And we also had it marked out on the pavement. When Jay was still there before he went on vacation, he did a walk-through and looked at that. And so what we had originally discussed with the engineers was a five-foot bulb out on either side. Because of engineering standards, when you have parking behind that bulb out, that minimum, there has to be a minimum of eight feet, so we can't have a car sticking out in front of that. So that, this is the alternative configuration to that site. We don't need to vote on this, but I just wanted, since we did agree to the first one, that... that we are all in agreement with this particular scheme, so we can go ahead and move forward with this. So if there's any questions, Robert can answer, or I can snap at it, but basically that bulbout will be on that corner coming, and then it'll transition into, as a flush curb, transition into three asphalt curb. Then the other side will be more or less lined up with the rest of Church Street going south, and then a minor flare up, which you get the telephone pole about midway up the parking lot as you go to West Market Street. So that's, that's the difference there. Still fifteen-foot turning radius, and the distance of that bulbout was predicated on the distance from the stop sign to the first parking space. We allow around twenty feet, which is pretty standard of what we do around intersections, just to help visibility of the cars going around there. So if there's any questions on that, if not, I'm assuming then you're all okay with that. And any other questions or comments on phase two, Robert?
No. Appreciate everybody's patience with the way the neighborhood's been dug up all summer.
They've been doing a great job, you know, every night, every evening they come around with the water, water truck and keep the dust down to a minimum. It does flare up over the weekends a little bit, but what I've been hearing is that people are very impressed with how they keep the site, especially in the evening, then on weekends when they're not there, and mostly all good comments, so.
Yeah, very conscious contractor.
Yeah, very good. If anybody had a question, they could contact, you know, Joe, who's the supervisor, and they've been doing great, very happy with their work. All right? And the next item on the agenda, so I did send you all a packet. And this is basically, we're trying to set, set a date for a public hearing on a local law to amend the official zoning map of the village of Red Hook. This local law amends the village zoning map to eliminate the land conservation, or LC District, and to align zoning district boundary lines with property lines. The text of the zoning law is amended, also amended to conform with the new zoning map. So for those who aren't familiar with the LC District, it is, I can do this from memory here, it's south of, south of the UBS property, it's bordered on the, on the west by the backyards on Smith Street, the backyards on the, on the south side of Red Hook Estates and behind Red Hook Commons. This area also contains a rather large wetland with a hundred-foot buffer. The wetland is a DDC regulated wetland. So that's basically the area, and it's, it's a landlocked area. The village seeks to expand opportunities for infill development within the village by extending the neighborhood mixed use district to an additional twelve point four three acres of land identified as tax lot thirteen four eight oh one. This land is currently the only land remaining in the land conservation district. The village finds that the LC designation is not necessary to protect the wetlands and buffer area located on the parcel as they are already protected by environmental easement in favor of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and that the remaining portions of the twelve point four three acre lot may be developed consistent with the regulations in the neighborhood mixed use district. With this law, there will be some amendments to our existing zoning law, and basically what that would involve would be the removal of the permitted sign regulations in section two hundred dash thirty-eight, signs and billboards. There was a section that was specific to the land conservation district, and that will be removed from the zoning law. With the submission, there's also the new map, Exhibit A dated August eleventh, two thousand sixteen, that shows the new configuration of the NMU zone and the removal of LC District. And we also have the full environmental assessment form, part one, for review. I will not go through all this entirety, but basically this is completed by the applicant or sponsor, just gives the, the name of the applicant, which is the village of Red Hook. Planning zoning actions will administer for legislative adoption or amendment of plan, local law ordinance, rule, regulation, be only approval which may, must be granted to enable the proposed action to proceed. The answer was yes. That the land use plans, do any municipality have adopted comprehensive land use plans include the site where the proposed action will be located? The answer is yes. Does the comprehensive plan include specific recommendations for the site where the proposed action will be located? Answer is no. The site, is the site a proposed action within a local, regional, special planning district? The answer is yes. It's remediation site for a designated brownfield opportunity area. Is the proposed action located wholly or partially within an area listed in an adaptive municipal open space plan? That was answered no. Is the site of the proposed action located in a municipality with an adaptive zone or zoning law or ordinance? The answer is yes. Is the land conservation district is being replaced with an extension of the neighborhood mixed use district, the bounding line adjustments occur throughout the village and all districts? Is the permitted, is the use permitted or allowed by a special or condition, conditional use permit? What is the new proposed zoning for the use, land conservation district is being replaced with an extension of neighborhood mixed use? And go through the rest, which you don't have to answer. Potential contamination history, has there been a reported spill to proposed project, or have any legal actions been conducted at or adjacent proposed site? The answer was yes. This was an environmental site remediation database. And it goes on to describe the DDC ID numbers for that remediation, this is one they cleaned up, there's a designated brownfield site where they built Red Hook Commons. Are there any unique geological features on the project? No. Surface water features, does any portion of the project site contain wetlands or other water bodies? That was yes. So federal waters, federal waters, and federal waters, and the wetlands, New York State wetland. And this will all be further resolved in part two of the EAF, which we'll do at our public hearing. Is a pro site designated floodway? No. Is the project site in the hundred-year floodplain? The answer is yes. Is the project site in the five-hundred-year floodplain? The answer is yes. Is the project site located over or immediately joining a primary principal source of aquifer? Is the principal aquifer a, yes. Does the project site contain a designated significant natural community? The answer is no. Does project site contain any species of plant or animal that is listed by the federal government or New York State as endangered or threatened? Or does it contain any areas identified as habitat for an endangered or threatened species? The answer is no. Does the project site contain any species of plant or animal that is listed by New York State as rare, or is it a species of special concern? The answer is no. Does the project site or any portion of it located in designated agricultural district certified pursuant to Ag and Markets Law? The answer is yes. Duchess is part of Duchess County, Ag District zero two zero. Does the project site contain all, a part of, or is, is it substantially contiguous to a registered national landmark? The answer is no. Is the site, project site located in, or does it join a state listed critical environmental area? The answer is no. We've included a map of the area in the last page. Does the project site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on or has been nominated by the New York State Board of Historic Preservation for inclusion on the state or national register of historic places? Part of the St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church, Elmwood Dorp Inn, Halfway Diner, Maze Field, Martin, Hendrick Martin House. So that's actually within the village of Red Hook. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office, Archaeological Site Inventory? The answer is yes. Those are those sites up above in the rest of the village. Is the project site located within a designated river quarter under the Wild Scenic and Recreational Rivers Program? Answer is no. And that was it. Upon the resolution, which I'll now read, I will hopefully sign page thirteen of this in said public hearing. So this is resolution number?
Twenty.
You want to read this? You want me to read it?
Resolution twenty, two thousand twenty dated August eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Resolution classifying the action and establishing the date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of proposed local law, and will be for two thousand sixteen. Whereas a proposed form, local law entirely local law to amend the official zoning map of the village of Red Hook, proposed local law, has been submitted to the village Red Hook Board of Trustees, the village of Red Hook. And whereas pursuant to section two, three, nine, M of the general municipal law, proposed amendments to the zoning law must be referred to the Department of Planning and Development for review and report thereon. Whereas a full environmental assessment form, EAF, dated August eleventh, two thousand sixteen, has been prepared on behalf of the board. Whereas in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is SEAKER, the board is required to determine the classification of the proposed project. Now for thereof to be resolved by the board of the following. Date number one is the adoption of proposed local law as a type one action under SEAKER. The deputy mayor is authorized to sign page thirteen of the EAF. The board is only involved, is the only involved agency under SEAKER. The board shall hold a public hearing on September twelfth, two thousand sixteen, at seven PM at the Village Hall, seven four six seven South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all the interested parties on the said proposed local law. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to have a notice of said public hearing published in the official newspaper of the village on or before September second, which is not less than ten calendar days prior to the date of the said public hearing. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to send a copy of the proposed local law, together with a copy of the EAF, to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for report, recommendations thereon, pursuant to section two, three, nine, M of the general municipal law. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to send a copy of the public hearing to the clerk of the town hall.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution number twenty dated August eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Do I hear a second?
Sir.
Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One last thing. We did get notification that the two thousand seventeen community developed block grant applications are now available. The deadline for submitting an application is October twenty-first at four o'clock PM. And like I mentioned before, we did resubmit our two thousand sixteen application for the mid-block crosswalk signaling. If we did not get that, we will, you know, consider reapplying for the two thousand seventeen community developed block grant. And I asked the board to come up with perhaps some other, other projects we would consider in the event that we did get approved for the crosswalks before we submit the application. Chances are, we will be under the low mod, or above the low mod qualification, which means it would have to be projects that are no more than a hundred thousand dollars and are ADA handicap accessible. Or we can do, I guess, sidewalk restoration like we did last time, so we can start thinking about those, and perhaps get Jay busy on the application and that. So that was it. As far as general business, we do have a workshop scheduled for August eighteenth at seven o'clock here at the Red Hook Village Building. We'll probably be meeting upstairs. At this point, is there any comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Couple of questions. Will the zoning board members get a copy of the new zone that you're trying to set up there?
When's, when it's approved or prior to approval?
I'd like to see prior, maybe put a date on it, tentative, so we have a clue as to something coming before our board.
Well, probably, yeah, when, when it's approved, we'll update the whole thing, the map and, and zoning regulations, so.
Well, I'm gonna get copies, like the nice color ones that you guys have, like we have all those things now, the current maps that we have of the color.
Right. You'll get new, new amended maps on that. So when it becomes adopted as local law, then that's kind of the point, so we'll really amend that NMU to expand, you know, the boundaries of that, which is removing, so we don't have to do any law line adjustments, it's all there, or just
Right.
Kind of making what's now yellow into like a blue green.
Right.
And then removing that section of the signs that's currently in the zoning law. So that'll be amended, so you guys will be up to date, hopefully, on that. You'll get a copy of, you know, in, I guess, in the meantime, I don't know if we'll republish the entire zoning code, but at least you'll get a copy.
Well, you've got a copy, it says pending.
Absolutely. Once it's adopted, then they'll take effect. And zoning board, the planning board, the trustees, we'll all get that, and we'll try to put it up online too with Ecode, so when people do try to find something on there, it'll be on the Ecode, so that will be, trying to finalize this, get it done.
All right. A question on the sewage thing, I know, you know where I stand with, but the water treatment plant is, exists now.
The water treatment plant?
Yeah, the one that exists currently, it's gonna be taken over.
The sewage treatment.
Right, okay. Is the village taking over the whole plant, expanding it and taking the whole thing over, or is it gonna be, be made part or partially owned by Red Hook Commons, whatever?
The intention at this point, we're still negotiating, but would be to take over the entire facility and the land.
Okay, now, is that particular property tax exempt at this point?
The LC District is not tax exempt, but there's no building that can go on it.
No, I'm talking about where the
No.
The company that currently has it, is that, is that any kind of exempt or tax abatement on that property now?
There's a pilot program right now on that.
Not on the, on the, on the lot where the system is located, we're talking about the adjacent property.
No. No, so phase three, you know, there's phase, there's three phases to the Red Hook Commons, approved by the planning board at this point in time. Phase one and two would be subsidized housing, you know, age limitations. Phase three is completely market rate, nothing, no exemptions, no whatever on that.
All right. The other question I have too is on, there are a lot of, several properties within that district that are not paying taxes, like that current tax exemption.
In what district?
The sewage district that you're going to use, that's it that, where the hookups are going to be.
Right.
Are they gonna get hooked up to the system?
Yes.
I, I think they should be charged a couple hundred thousand, fifty thousand dollars.
They'll be charged in accordance to what's been designated, so they
They're not paying tax.
They pay water bills, and they'll be paying sewer.
That's paying, that's the ongoing cost, it's not paying for the five million dollars.
They'll be paying capital and O and M, similar to any other property. So they won't be exempt from paying fees for the water or sewer. They're currently not exempt from paying water fees.
I know, but I'm talking about the structural structure itself.
I, I, you know, that's something beyond local control as far as tax property.
Well, then they shouldn't be hooked up if they're not part of the system.
They are part of the system, and they won't be hooked up.
Well, I think that's really taking advantage of the property owners in the village.
Okay, thank you.
You should make it mandatory that upon sale of the property to a public entity, they are required to definitely hook into the system, and whatever cost may be, traffic will bear whatever the prevailing wage is based on.
I guess I don't really understand your question, but, so you're saying, or your comment, so you're saying right now
To pick on somebody, let's say the To pick on somebody, let's say the library.
They're not tax exempt. Well, they are, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, okay. If you put in a system to them.
Yes.
They're paying currently water, I guess.
Yes.
But let's say, you know, it's a $4 million or so planned, plus you're going to have your ongoing costs, which is what the water is sort of based on. But they're not going to be paying for the actual structure itself.
Well, fees, fees for the sewer project wouldn't be based on property tax assessment or how much you pay in property tax. It's based on the amount of water you use. So if they use water equivalent to a single-family house, that would be the same charge that a single-family house would be charged. So there'd be no.
Well, I guess they're, they're getting.
So your general fund that we use here in the village assessing property tax is not basis for the fee. It's based on water usage.
But the bond you've taken out.
So the bond is paid for, the capital and the O and M is based on a calculation based on how much water you use, not on the assessment of the property.
So the fee for that water is going to be higher than my property, let's say, which is not in that district.
If they use the same amount within the range of your property.
Well, they're not going to pay, they're paying the same thing I'm paying then. So they're getting it for a ride again.
They would pay identical to what you're paying.
I'm not getting nothing for it.
I, I don't understand your question. So you're not in the district.
Right.
So you're, right now, at this point, we're looking at service area only. So if you're not in the service area, you're not paying anything.
Well, that really hasn't been clarified by the Board as far as I know who's.
That's, that's.
You're still figuring that, how you're going to work that out yet.
We are quite figuring.
But I think the tax exempt.
The way, the way we're heading and the way the bond resolution was set up is that, and this is pretty, pretty close to being definite, but only those people within the service area who are hooked up will be paying for capital and O and M on sewer project. So if you're not in the service area, you won't be paying for it. If you're hooked up into it, yes, you will be. So that's, that's the direction. Right now, the next step is to, we're waiting basically to see how many grants we get. And that'll determine the fee schedule.
Okay.
So until we know how much we're going to get in grants, we, we have several things already locked in place, or offered to us based on the bond resolution. That does put us in a nice spot. But we want to make sure so. The final phase will be developed, what they call a map plan report. And, and this map plan report, because the village is considered the district, we're not forming any new district. And this will be phased. So phase one will be what we're talking about, the $4.9 million capital cost will be for the service area of the general business district only. So if you're in that area, that'll be the cost. If at some future point, some future Board of Trustees decides to expand the district to include your house, for instance, then we'll cross that bridge when we get to, but then, then you'll be assessed for the sewer. All right? Is that clear?
I'm fairly confident we get it.
Clear.
I, I, I can't say definitive, but I can say pretty close to being, that's the direction we're going. So we looked at many models, as you, as we've said before, we're trying to be open with But it's, it's pretty clear at this point. All right? Now, I'd like to make a motion to pay bills after the audit.
Second.
I second.
And I would also like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Think it's a new record.
Woo-hoo!